My phone is late.
We were waiting for you.
I heard you coming.
Yeah.
There was a call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, November 1st. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chancet?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Zirone? And Vogelsinger? We have 11 out of 14.
Okay, thank you. I know I did get emails from both Mike and Nick that they would not be able to be here tonight.
When you give a reminder to speak in the microphone, could you make a special, because it really hasn't been captured very well on previous recordings?
And then a reminder tonight is for everybody to remember to speak directly into the microphone for the BATV recording. We've had some issues lately. So make sure if you do come up here, you can adjust the mic to whatever level you need to to talk tonight. And then item three, has items been moved or changed? Do we have anything tonight?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And then item four is matters from the public. Do we have anything from the public for items not on the agenda tonight? Okay, nobody online. Up next then would be the consent agenda, which is one item. Item A, approval of the Cow Executive Session Minutes for September 27th, 2022, setting the price of land for sale. Any comments, questions? Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Motion by Malay, second by Sulfah. Okay, roll call please.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Zirone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado? Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
And Ayazi?
Aye.
Motion carry 12 to 0.
All right, thank you. And up next is item number six, which is a discussion on the Carriage Crest 2022 study update. Rahat?
A few weeks ago, the committee of the whole decided that we should have a subcommittee to go and meet with the residents at the Carriage Crest subdivision. So last week on, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the date.
Monday?
Monday. We met with the residents, about 15 residents came out there, four of our aldermen were there too. So we kind of talked to the residents about the difficulties or the roadblocks that we have. The first thing is that the project cost was estimated to be about $3 million. Now with inflation and all other things that's happening, the project cost is now about $7 million or somewhere between 6 and 7 million dollars. So we presented that to the residents that that extra money we don't have right now. But obviously, city council can opt to issue a bond or come up with a different funding options for that. So we kind of brainstormed that what can we do if we think that our money is limited, which is $3 million, what options do we have? And another thing that we presented to them, and they know this, is that when the surface water comes to that park and we go there after a day or two and we start pumping the water, the basement flooding kind of stops or gets eliminated. So they understand that dynamics that's going on. What's happening is currently, the surface water comes to the pond, it's infiltrate into the ground. That's how it's designed right now. And then it gets mixed up with the groundwater, which is elevated, and that groundwater now gets into their basement. So if we help them in getting the surface water out of the pond as soon as it gets to the pond, then the groundwater situation is not going to get worse from the surface water that they are getting. So we explained all that. They know all these dynamics, so we can discuss all that. And I think Gary and myself at least walked away with the opinion that the residents are kind of open to the idea of if we come up with a solution within the money that we have from the ARPA fund, that we get the, collect the surface water some within the pond and line the pond so that the surface water is not infiltrating inside the, or in the ground. And then we get that surface water out of the pond as soon as we can. One of the options that we are manually doing now is taking the pumps from our garage and pumping it out. But what if we install a pump there permanently and then as soon as the water comes to a level, it just starts pumping? So it can be for small rain, rainfall even, or it can be a bigger rainfall even. So we have to find a balance, and again, we haven't talked about or explored the pumping option yet, but we have to find a balance, what kind of pump size, what should be the outfall looks like, and if we take the water all the way to Fox River or some other places, then that may eliminate, and we stress that to them, that that will not solve your problem. Because some of the residents mentioned that even the rain stops, they are still, their sump pump is still going on for seven days. So that's the groundwater issue. So we cannot solve that with this project that we are currently thinking about. So it will not eliminate all the difficulties they are having right now, but it's a one step forward. So the option kind of we talked about is maybe we look at the pumping option, maybe we implement that, because that's the budget we currently have, and then revisit and see who is still having problem, who is still having repeated flooding issue. Most likely, it will take care of 80 to 90% of the issue, and then there are individual few homeowners, maybe handful of them, that then we tailor some solutions for their individual homes. And that could be, you know, additional sump pumps, backup sump pumps, or doing something around their basement so that the water doesn't get into their basement so fast, you know, those have to be explored later on. So we talked about all this, and as I said, Gary and myself and even Andrea, we walked away thinking that the residents overall were open to that suggestion and ideas. Abby was there and Leah was there, so if you have any input to what I said, feel free to chime in. Dan was there too, so, and George was there, so.
I just have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. So I see the solution as a big sump pump, like a giant sump pump pumping. Where does that water get pumped to? So are we contributing to the groundwater because we're pumping it somewhere?
No, so it will be going to directly to Fox River. So we'll pump it and we'll install, we'll still install a pipe. So if you do a gravity solution, the pipes are now 40 inch to 60 inch diameter pipe. Those are gigantic pipe, like the pipe is bigger than me, right, in height, so I can walk. So to get the elevation or to get the water to all the way to Fox River, in some places, you have to put the pipes in the ground 40 feet into the ground. So that's a big hole. So one of the costs that we don't talk about is the inconvenience cost. So if I'm going down Shabana, you know, and I'm digging in front of your house a 40 feet hole, you will not have access to your house for days.
Right.
So we were looking at it, and not only we were also talking about that there are existing utilities out there, right? There is water main, there is sanitary main and all that. So what happens to that? Because you have to dig through all that. So there is a, and that's one of the reasons the cost is going up and up, that there is this whole cost and also the inconvenience cost, which obviously not included in the $7 million figure. But it's going to be pretty scary for people who are not going to get benefited from this project, you know? Like they're going to say, why are you doing this in front of my house when I'm not getting benefited? But that's not the issue. If we pump, then you can look into not having a 60 inch pipe. You can look into a 12 inch pipe, because you're now pumping and pressuring the water and getting it out all the way to the Fox River. So that's a smaller pipe that doesn't need to be in the 40 feet in the ground. And then that can be easily constructed with directional boring. So 12 inch pipe, you can directionally bore and install it without digging the street altogether. So that's, those are the things is making us rethink this whole solution, that how we approach this.
Okay, and that makes sense a little bit. The one thing, just looking at the area, is it's very kind of, it's an older, it's an older neighborhood. So it wasn't invented with the basins, where the new neighborhoods have a basin where things to go. And I just, one thing I worry about, because I deal with it on my side of the town in Ward 1, where we have flooding issues because we have the same similar neighborhood, there's no place for the water to go. So the only thing that I just worry about is having the smaller one just for that area where the bigger would take care of the whole neighborhood as it continues to rain. I would like to solve it on a full-time, bigger basis than a small one. But I'm certainly willing to listen to what, you know, the other council members have to say about it. That's just my concern, just knowing from the flooding on my side of town and all the work that we've been trying to do on that to address it. I want to give the same courtesy, because there's no place for the water to go except for the yards. And I want to be able to solve for that long term.
And we recognize that. The only thing that we said that from the engineering studies that we have done, you know, the groundwater issue, that is not easily solvable. You know, what we are trying to solve is the surface water that comes to that pond, and we are trying to not let the water go infiltrate into the ground, rather go to the river, so that it's not making the situation worse than what it is for the groundwater.
So I'll go. So if the gravity system with the large pipes were to be put in, are you saying that wouldn't necessarily solve the whole problem? There'd still be the groundwater problem?
Yes.
Okay, so it's going to, the pump system would basically do the same, but there's going to be maintenance with it, obviously.
Exactly.
There'll be that cost, but it won't be the initial, you know, okay, I understand.
At the meeting with the residents, I know Alderman Beck brought up the possibility of naturalizing the current basin to kind of help with natural options for absorbing that, which is in line with the climate committee's goals and everything that we signed on to. Is that something we could get more information about as you're coming up with the creative solutions?
Yeah, I think we can talk about it when we move into that stage. I'm not going to say yes or no right now, because we have to look into that. Because one of the things we talked about, and I kind of said that, that we want to line the basin so that water is not infiltrating down. I mean, Gary kind of said that, the water is really doing what the climate committee probably wants to see right now, right? Water infiltrate, goes into groundwater and recharge the groundwater. But that's, we think, from the engineering studies, that that is actually making the things worse. So yes, we'll probably explore those options and then see what can be done.
Yeah, and I was thinking about that too, after Gary's comment, and yeah, I would wonder too how low the clay would be, that naturalizing it in addition to the clay might also have co-benefits too, because there's benefits outside of just infiltration that the, that naturalizing it will do. We had discussed having another committee meeting, a subcommittee meeting tomorrow night to kind of hash out. I have a whole bunch of questions, and Dan, I know you said maybe if we accomplish everything tonight, we can just skip our co-meeting tomorrow. But I wasn't sure what you were feeling about that, Dan. I can launch into my questions now if you want.
Go ahead, Dan.
I was just saying, I figure if the council is ready, by all means, none of the things we were going to talk about tomorrow aren't necessarily a secret. We were just trying to get a bunch of work done, go and bring back to committee and hash it out. But this is actually really important, so if you're prepared, by all means.
Yeah, I've got a few. I mean, I don't, I don't feel as prepared as I wanted to be because I didn't get through. Thank you for, to Andrea for sending the surveys over and getting to read all of those. Because from the, you know, the summary document that EEI put together, it was really interesting to see where their water was coming from and where it was causing problems in different spots in the neighborhood, and I wanted more time to kind of look at that against the map. Because as Gary reiterated at the meeting, and you were just saying that the gravity sewer or the pumping system is likely to help the problem for a few residents. We don't know if it'll help those out, the ones that are out on the outskirts that are a little bit farther away from the basin, if it's going to fix it. So it is still a really big investment, even the pumping system, to hopefully work or will work for a couple of people. And that's why I was going to go back and look through Andrea's older documents too, to say, what full study has been done? I know the scope of work to EEI at this point was a de-watering that basin. This is the scope. We want you to study how to get water out of here. It's not a comprehensive watershed-wide, how do we prevent flooding across this area? Something I had sent to Dan ahead of the meeting was, I think it was after, up until the floods in 2013, the, there was a bunch of federal money that came out, very similar to now. And the Center for Neighborhood Technology in the city came up with this rain-ready program where they did, they hired a contractor and they went house by house and asked, do you have flooding, what does it look like? And then had the microengineering or whatever you called it, Dan, kind of individualized solutions per house. And I don't, they don't do it out here in the suburbs, but, you know, they hired a consultant to do it. It's something that, you know, a model we could follow, and then they had kind of individualized or kind of, you know, a couple groupings, depending on who they could get into. I had told Dan about this program, and I was reading about it more, and I was talking to a coworker at work, one of our watershed managers, just to help me read the engineering studies, and she was like, oh yeah, I wrote that. So actually also not the person that was in the backyards actually doing the work, so that was really interesting in her previous career of doing that. So I just thought that while I'm not opposed to the pumping solution, because it does seem like a major design flaw we should probably fix in that basin, I am also a little wary of not having the conversation on the front end, that it's going to maybe take more investment in this neighborhood if we choose to make more investment in this neighborhood to help other residents that are not going to be helped by this solution. And I think it should be packaged altogether so that we're not putting all our eggs in one basket, forgetting half the neighborhood, and then leaving them not high and dry. That's the opposite of high and dry. Still wet and soggy. That would be my suggestion.
I guess one thing that I thought about when we've gone through and talked about this so much is, have we gone back and looked at what was there originally before this was built? Before any of the houses or anything was built in there? Because if my memory serves me right, that was all like low-lying area in the middle of where that bend is on Western Avenue, where farm fields went through there, and there was never anything that ever grew in there. It was always like a marsh, wet, almost like a bog area from about where this basin is, almost to the west and going out towards Randall Road. And, you know, one of the thoughts I had was, is I know it's a long way to get to the Fox River. Have we thought about directing the water the other way if we're going to force main feed it? Is it a shorter distance to go the other way? Can we do that? Can Mill Creek handle that?
In the marsh?
What?
Get it into the marsh?
Get it into the marsh, because then the marsh can dissipate it, you know, on a regular basis as soon as, you know, a rain event happens. You know, I started looking and thinking, okay, we're talking about all these other things. Have we explored that? Have we gone back and looked at what was there? Because if the groundwater level is actually one of the biggest problems with the basements, no matter what we do with the basin or draining it, it's going to solve the other problems if the groundwater stays high. Because I know there are several houses in my neighborhood that are that way, that literally it takes a week or more after a one or two inch rain event for some pumps to actually cycle and not just run consistently. Just because where they're located and where the water is around their houses.
Yeah, I mean, we looked into draining towards the marsh with the gravity system. It's just that the elevation didn't work, so we didn't explore that. But with pumping, we'll definitely look into that, because that's a shorter distance for sure.
Right, and if that would be something that could be acceptable or could work better even to help the marsh stay, you know, constantly flowing through that so that it doesn't just turn into a mud flat bog out there, that I think may even benefit that. So, you know, just another option of something I think we should keep open to look at.
I mean, you know this, that we did put some monitoring well there and hoping for some rain. We had those monitoring well almost a year, but nothing happened, you know? But from the soil boardings that we took, it seems like there are like some cutoffs and there is some connection between different layers there, and that causes the groundwater to come up in different places in different elevation, because there are cutoffs. Some of the residents were, I don't know whether they were joking, they said that this was a dump site. It was like if you dig, you might find some Ford 150 there.
Yeah, there could be some very interesting things. I think most of the park is built on that. What I remember is, to me, what was the farmer's dump out there?
That was part of the report I think Andrea talked about.
Yes.
Was that, I thought maybe we had talked about digging all of that up and getting it out of there, maybe help with that. I guess we didn't, didn't keep going with that idea.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't know what it would take, like even like there's the one pond that's over at, on Western and just, just south of Crestview. If that pond could be, you know, could be enlarged by depth to be able to handle that. And if you made that pond deeper, would that take the pressure off of the groundwater? If you were to change the floor of that pond, would that actually change the groundwater levels? If you dropped the level of that pond, you know, physically brought the elevation of it down? Because I think if you were to raise it, you know, berm it or do anything else to try to raise to hold more water in, I think you'd actually put more pressure on the groundwater around it, which I don't think would be good.
Dan has his hand.
Dan, go ahead.
Oh yeah, I definitely want to represent the residents' point of view. But they were very concerned that we were using language regarding a pause, implying that we were not going to be doing anything with the project while we were doing some studying. But it appears that there are solutions that are very available to us. There are, we're not that far off, and so I guess they were looking for us to give some direction to the greater council to continue on with the engineering and additional studying, do an updated study of the neighborhood, at least a survey of the neighborhood, to make sure we're catching, you know, everybody who has recurring problems. The homes that they were most affected or deeply affected by this, the unlucky ones that are up against that one ridge where all this water is collecting, they were open to these micro-solutions. And they said that they wanted us to move forward, understanding that even if whatever we come up with here doesn't fully fix the problem for everyone, we'll be able to identify the handful of homes that may need to lose their basement, that may need to be, you know, going to discussions about possibility of selling their homes, things like that. But they encouraged us to step away from that pause word and say, we are moving forward with that. So my hope is that through our discussion, we can acknowledge that this project is not on hold. It is actually moving forward.
Yeah, I think it's possibly even just taken a different direction, where, you know, instead of us just trying to say, oh, let's go for a gravity feed system to drain that, look at what really is going on over there with both the groundwater levels and the pond and figure out if there, is there anything we can do with it that benefits more than just draining off the surge that happens when we get, you know, a two-inch rain event?
Yeah.
Because we all know that that's a disaster when that happens over there. But if it takes seven days for water to go away, that's not, you know, the pond isn't going to solve that.
And the fact that we have control over some of the localized areas, that we have control of the basin, we can move the pump if we have to. We know we can pop open that weir if we have to at the, at the marsh. There's plenty of capacity at the marsh. And even if we find out that we have a large rain event and we do have to get creative, we'll have, we'll be a little more nimble, I guess, is what it comes down to.
Yeah.
I think I had asked in our meeting last month about the life cycle cost of the pumping, and my apologies if I missed that information somewhere.
We haven't got into that step yet to look at the life cycle cost.
So it's hard to say if this, over time, will be that much more cost-effective than perhaps the gravity one?
I mean, if I have to take a guess, life cycle cost-wise, maybe it will be similar. But, you know, some of the costs that we never talked about, which is like the inconvenience cost and all that, if you could put a dollar amount to it, then a 50, 60 inch pipe is way more costly. Like if we put a dollar amount to it.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, if council gives us the direction that look into the pumping option, then obviously we'll bring those back to you and present to you.
Gary?
I would say, I would feel comfortable saying yes, investigate the pumping option in addition to the wider scope of work. If we could ask our, if we ask EEI again to do it, to, I don't know, also provide those other alternatives for elsewhere in the neighborhood, enlarging the basin, dredging out another basin, some, you know, can the other systems we're pumping to handle it, and all of those considerations would be helpful.
Do you know, Rahat, is there like a stormwater main that runs down Fabian Parkway? It seems to me that either we put one in or Geneva put one in that's like a 40 inch or 48 inch pipe out there, that's a gigantic pipe.
I'm pretty sure there is something out there on Fabian.
Is there any way or there be a possibility of, you know, tying into that so that we were not making new routes, but just adding flow to a route that already exists?
We can, we can explore that, but typically, systems are not handled way more than what they need is. I mean, we normally don't design a system with more.
Because it seems to me when that was built, it was, it was stating, you know, that it was built twice or three times whatever size they thought they needed for that.
We can.
Because they had Fabian Parkway all torn up when they were moving it to four lanes. Okay, any other questions?
So the direction is to move forward with exploring the option of the pumping system, but also to explore those other options of alternative areas for drainage.
And even just an alternative route to, you know, to pump that to, you know, if that makes sense or that is a possibility. You know, one that would be less infrastructure to have to deal with moving forward if it's, you know, half as long, a pipe that has to be put in the ground.
Yeah, I mean, and looking, like I said, I didn't, I didn't get to all the surveys to look at all the spots on the map that reported a lot of flooding that don't seem to be on that same ridge. It's like, what is their issue? Is that something that could be budgeted in at this point too, to say, an individual, like homeowner interview to say, where is the water coming from, what is happening? Look at the topography, look at the specific drainage. Is it coming up from your basement? Is it overflowing from the sewer in the street and into your yard and then causing problems here? Like what? I don't know. If that could be, I know that's maybe a bigger ask and a bigger budget item, but.
Are there storm sewers that run throughout the neighborhood that have some pumps into them now? I mean, do we know that that system works well and is it plugged somewhere or backed up somewhere that contributes to the groundwater issues?
So there is storm system throughout the neighborhood, and I cannot tell you exactly whether everybody's tied to that. But most of the residents mentioned that, that their pump, they may have four sump pumps in their basement, and they cycle within like 10 seconds or 15 seconds. They said they are like pumping 4,000 gallons an hour or something.
I don't know where that water's coming from.
It's like.
Right, and that's my question is where is that going? Is it going out and never? Is it going out and never making it to the storm sewer? Going away? Or is it just going up back into their yard and coming right back in?
So that's one of the things, that it's going into the basin, and then our theory is basin is infiltrating, and then it's going back to their some pump.
Right, okay.
It's recycling again, so that's why if we get the water out.
Away, correct.
Then it's not going to recycle again.
Okay, well, I guess that's another question we have to answer, you know, make sure that the system around it works correctly, so that we're not just pumping water in a big circle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rohat.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to item seven, which is ordinance 2247, amending the zoning code, Batavia City Code Title 10, related to sign regulations.
We have Zach Ewald here this evening to speak on this issue.
Go ahead.
I'm, uh, Laura, I'm virtual.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Zach.
Okay. The zoning code restricts flagpoles to a maximum height of 35 feet and limits wall signs to the first and second floor of multi-story buildings in the PFI zoning district. In accordance with the Plan Commission recommendation made at a public hearing on October 5th, we've proposed to allow flagpoles up to 45 feet and wall signs above the second floor in the city's PFI zoning district. Ultimately, this stemmed from the Smidels, related to the Flag Day Monument, and to the renaming of the city's government center to the Jeffrey D. Shelkey Government Center. Staff is in support of this.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments? So we try to do something nice, and then we have to change our code because we didn't look at the code first. It happens, Leah, go ahead.
Was it, is it Bell's Tire that's going on Randall Road that asked for a zoning amendment for their flagpole?
I believe it was, yes.
And we approved that, but we didn't have to change the code.
It was part of the land development, I think.
I'm just curious.
Scott Bunnings online, I wonder if, does he remember?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, that was part of the actual zoning for that particular one. We addressed that on a case-by-case basis for that.
So in this case, we're not doing it case-by-case, we just want to change the.
Right, for this particular, for PFI.
Right, and the idea is that the PFI is primarily government-type buildings, and, you know, they're required under state law to have flagpoles in many cases, so we just figured it makes more sense for us to just address it wholesale in the PFI district.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions? If not, I will make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2247, amending the zoning code, Batavia City Code Title 10, related to sign regulations. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Newer?
Aye.
Serone?
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
Okay, thank you. And up next is item eight, which is ordinance 2254, annexing and zoning part of Nikor right away between Fabian Parkway and Barker Drive. And that one, Scott's?
This is again, another one of the donut holes that we've got that we're proposing to annex, so this consists of two areas, one of which is actually in Geneva Township, the other part that's in Batavia Township. So the one part is from Fabian down to Hansford, and the other part is from Main Street to Barker. We had annexed a couple of the road rights of way that surrounded these, so now these parcels are kind of the remnants of the surrounding that we did with that. So that would bring these parcels into the city limits. The annexation ordinance would be effective the day of, after the city council approves it, because there are no residents there where we have to worry about electors or anything like that on these properties.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? If not, I will make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2254, annexing and zoning part of Nikor right away between Fabian Parkway and Barker Drive. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Malley. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Newer?
Aye.
Serone absent. Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado absent. Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Up next is item nine, Resolution 22-108-R, approving resolution accepting public utility easements at 1459 Lewis Fork Drive. Rohat, go ahead.
So a new building has been constructed at 1459 Louisburg Drive, and they have installed water main along the north and south side of the property to maintain that water main. City requests that they provide us an utility easement. This document or this resolution really authorizes the city engineer and mayor and the clerk to sign the utility easement document that needs to be recorded.
Okay, any questions? Okay, then I will make the motion that we recommend to council, Resolution 22108-R, approving a resolution accepting public utility easements at 1459 Lewis Fork Drive. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Malley. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Newer?
Aye.
Serone absent. Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado absent. Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
Okay, up next is item 10, Resolution 22109-R, approving a resolution accepting public utilities easement at 225 South Harrison Street.
So this is a residential property, and the property owner is making some changes to their property, so whenever they are making some changes and they come to the city for permit, we ask them to grant us an easement in case there is no easement, current easement within their property. So we have asked this resident to give us a five-foot easement along the property line to install any future utilities, including electric, water, or sanitary. So this is a resolution authorizing the city engineer and the mayor to sign the plan of easement and get that recorded.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Not, I will make the motion that we recommend to council, Resolution 22109-R, approving resolution to accept public utilities easement at 225 South Harrison Street. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Malley. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Newer?
Aye.
Serone absent. Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado absent. Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
All right, thank you, Rohat. Up next then is item 11, which is ordinance 2251, 2023 wages and salaries for non-collectively bargained employees. Wendy?
Good evening. Tonight I bring you the wage ordinance for 2023, and as you may recall, we like to bring this ordinance prior to the budget discussion, so in the ordinance changes, there are some changes reflecting budget, so we can have those conversations as well as just kind of understand as I go through that. Overall, we are recommending an overall cost of living increase of 4%. As you know, we review and watch throughout the year the economic indicators such as CPIU, the cost of living, social security, which doesn't play a huge role, but still we watch that piece of it, we look at average arbitration hearings, there's lots of things we look at throughout the year. And as, as you know, this year has been very unique compared to years in the past, and currently, right now, the CPIU for the past 12 months currently sits at 8.2%. If you look at just what they call core inflation, which is excluding food and energy, we're still at 6% in the past 12 months. And then this year alone, the CPIU, if you look at just from January until September, we're sitting at 5.4%. As you know, it's in the news, this is security cost of living is, currently they announced it's going to be 8.7 for 2023. It's the largest they've had in over 40 years. So at this time, there wasn't, I'll be honest, there was maybe, honestly, maybe three or four contracts and arbitrations to look at going into 2023, so there, I didn't put that information in there as I felt like it was very skewed. And so, but, so currently at this point, we would be recommending a modest 4% cost of living increase to our wage and salaries. Additionally, on the wage and salaries, there's a couple proposed changes with the positions, and I just want to go through them. And myself, Laura, and well, as well as Howard is here to talk about the changes that are listed to answer any questions you may have. First, the current administration administrative assistant that's in the administration department, that would change to a newly created position called Deputy Clerk Administrative Assistant. So this person, which is some of the similar responsibilities, I'll let Laura explain more, but it's moving them from, currently the administrative assistant position is a pay grade seven, based on the additional responsibilities, it would move it to a pay grade eight. In HR, I would be recommending, currently, right now, I have one and a half, I guess you would say, people to help assist with the HR department, and I would be asking for, to change my part-time administrative assistant to actually a full-time person, and rather than her, she currently does HR administrative skills, but she does quite a bit more in regards to HR experience, would be calling her an HR coordinator and moving her to a pay grade eight. And then currently, the job title of the HR specialist, in HR specialists, it really doesn't match her job title or in her job duties of what she does. I wouldn't say necessarily she's a specialist in any one particular area, in fact, she's a generalist, and she does a little bit of everything. And looking at the comps and reviewing the information, she is currently, or that position, sorry, that position is below comps, and we would be, I would be recommending it, moving it from a pay grade 12 to a pay grade 13. And then in IT, the systems manager would be given a title change to Assistant Information Technology Director, so that would move that position with the new job title to a pay grade 20. And then the IS technician would be given the job title change to IT Network Administrator and move to pay grade 13. So additionally, any person that, any employee that is in those current positions, when they move to the new, if this were to be approved, if they moved to the new position, they would be moved to the next closest step. So they're not automatically, like, for example, if someone is at the top of the step range in their current pay grade, and they're moving a couple grades, they're not automatically going to go to the top where we review that and move them to the next closest salary that's appropriate to them. So if it gets them back in the step system, they would be moved appropriately. And then lastly, the battalion chief holiday pay, there is a proposal of 300, additional $350 into 2023. As you may be aware, the battalion chiefs work on all of the holidays, they don't receive any additional holiday pay in regards to, they just work on their regular schedule, so we give this stipend to them. And as you know, the city, we have added an additional holiday, so that's why the proposed increase of $350. And then the last thing, just I want to make sure I am transparent, that I forgot to mention in the memo, is that currently, also in the ordinance, just to make sure this is noted, that we currently have an internal employee who handles the Police and Fire Commission, recording secretary duties. In the past, we have used outside people, and when we do, we pay them, you know, as an outside contractor, but if we are utilizing someone inside to do those duties, we give them an additional stipend of $350, or, sorry, $3,500 that's paid throughout the year, so they don't receive overtime during those duties and the time that they spend to do that. It's as if they were an additional person doing that, so. So I don't know what questions anyone has about any of the positions, about the change that we can answer at this point.
Mark?
I guess in the changes, what I don't see is like, what step are people at? So to know if you're going from 18 to 20, well, what step are they at in 18? Are they at the top of the ladder on 18, and now they're going to move to, you know, the middle on 20?
So Howard, do you want to go ahead and answer those questions?
Both IT people are at the top of their steps, top of the range.
In HR, my generalist has been here 30 years, so yes, she's at the top, so just by moving one pay grade, she would of course go to the top of it, because it's only one pay grade. My part-time administrative, she's currently, I think, at step C, and then she would move to the same level when she moved, because again, it's just one pay grade, so.
Okay, thank you. And when we get to the budget, we can see what the, those actual numbers would be.
Yeah, I do have the impact, my budget, but you can see it, and it's already in the budget, but I have, I brought that up here, it's in my paper somewhere, but.
And I thought we talked about this last year, so this is what became confusing in the budget last year, was that we started talking about salaries and improving salaries ahead of approving the budget. And.
Actually, it was the reverse, and so the request was to move the risk.
I'm trying to remember.
And we can do it either way.
We have them at the same time, I guess.
The impact is still the same.
Because you take them out of context, and it's like, okay, and then all of a sudden you get to the budget, and you're like, well, shoot, now what are you going to cut from the budget to make this happen? And having it all at the same time makes it a better discussion in my mind, but it's tough, because then like we come back a week and a half later, and now we start talking budget, and it's like, hmm.
I mean, the other thing we could do, it just would require two actions from here, is like, we could always have the, just the, in general, the cost of living discussion, and approve the wage and ordinance based off of the, and I know it's still related to budget, but that's everybody, and then any changes to position, we could have that during the budget discussion, if those get approved, then I would come back with an amended wage and ordinance to reflect those changes in the wage and ordinance. So, I mean, that would be a potential option.
Okay.
What is the change, how does the deputy clerk title change that role in what they do?
I probably would be the best one to address that, and if Kate Garrett were here, she would say that there are certain aspects of the clerk's position that have been difficult to keep up with, not being someone who is in the building every single day. Among those are working with our, the people who update our code, so for every ordinance that we pass, those things that change the code, we have to provide that notice and work with them to get all of that updated, some of the internal document processing, and then also having a deputy clerk would allow the ability in the event that we have businesses that once city council has approved their liquor license, that those things could be signed quicker and put in the hands of those businesses so that they could utilize those. And sometimes things are not available for the clerk to sign the night of the city council meeting, but rather available a few days later, and it's very difficult for the clerk to, you know, be stopping by on a daily basis. And so the deputy clerk would not act. you know, be stopping by on a daily basis. And so the deputy clerk would not act, accept in accord with a direction from the city clerk, but it would help us to keep up to date on things with regard to that.
And how does that, that overlap work when the city clerk is in an elected position?
Well, the city clerk has the ability to name a deputy clerk and to assign tasks that are that person's official role. They can assign them to others. That's why I would say that, you know, Karen would not be doing any of this at her own discretion, but instead it would be assigned tasks from the clerk herself.
One more question on this memo. The, is it only the police chief and the public works director who receive a paid car allowance?
No, I receive.
And the city administrator, but the city administrator's not listed on our wage and salary ordinance, but it's those three positions.
And then I'm, what, why those positions specifically?
I'm going to be, so the police chief in particular, it, it varies. So I can, I can just use the current example. Current, usually they either can take a vehicle home or they would use their own vehicle. In the past, most police chiefs just use their own vehicle because they are required to respond and be available 24 hours a day. And they're going to, they may use their vehicle, exactly that, to go to somewhere. In this situation, actually, when Chief Maza just got promoted, he took a look at the fleet, and actually, there was a, he had, he had a DC vehicle, and then there was an investigation vehicle that wasn't used a whole ton. So he made some adjustments, and he is, he decided to continue to use his deputy chief vehicle. So he's, he's not receiving the allowance. If for some reason that were to change in, in the future, of, of course, he has that option available, and that would be discussed. So, give you an idea.
And like my position, their positions also require more off-site meetings than, I think, any of the other department heads.
Yes. So for example, the public works director is able to use their vehicle. They receive that allowance. So then they're not filling out mileage, they're not able to fill, fill out mileage and so forth. So.
Okay.
And if they're doing long-term trips, they do use the city vehicle. So, so especially, for example, our public works director does a lot with Prairie State, he'll use a city vehicle. So there's not that extra additional cost.
Does anybody online have any questions on this?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. Can I get a motion to recommend to council 2251, the 2023 wages and salaries for non-collectively bargained employees?
So moved.
Motion by Solfa.
Second.
Second by Beck. Roll call, please.
Solfa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
No.
Serone, absent.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto? Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
And Chanson?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 1.
Okay. Thank you. Next is ordinance 2252, 2023 wages and salaries for paid-in-call members of the fire department. Wendy?
So similar to what we just spoke about, staff would be recommending a 4% increase for our paid-in-call group. In the ordinance, you'll see it's reflected in their hourly wage rate. And then additionally, they receive points. So that dollar amount, that budgeted dollar amount was increased by 4%. So you'll see that 4% change through the memo, or through the ordinance, sorry.
Any questions, comments? Okay. Can I get a motion then to recommend to council ordinance 2252, 2023 wages and salaries for paid-in-call members of the fire department?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Solfa, second by Lehman. Roll call, please.
Solfa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone, absent. Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto, absent. Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
And Chanson?
Aye.
Motion can carry 12 to 0.
All right. Thank you. Next is item 13, which is ordinance 2253, 2023 payment for emergency services disaster agency volunteer members.
So as you know, we have a small group of ESDA volunteers that provide a definite beneficial service to the city for special events and even emergency situations. With this ordinance, while in general, they are volunteer, but there is a small amount for per types of positions and response that they receive, you can see that's listed in the ordinance. There is no change to their hourly rate nor the farmer's market event that we've had conversations in the last year or so about. But there is a 4% change in the, the points budgeted dollar amount that's split among them, as well as the ESDA manager position, which is appointed by the fire chief. That position would be proposed to do a 4% increase as well.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay. I'll make the motion then. We recommend to council ordinance 22-53, 2023 payment for emergency services disaster agency volunteer members. Motion by Wolf, second by Solfa. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Sorry, my computer is fine. I didn't hear him. Did you?
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone, absent.
Vocal singer? Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto, absent. Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanson?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
All right. Thank you.
Alan?
Yes?
Just for clarification, so I voted no on that first one because I really want to see that in context of the budget. The other one, like, doing the 4% was fine with me because of where we're at in the world, but it was really kind of, I'd rather not vote on that at city council until we have a whole budget in front of us.
So more so on the changes in positions?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for the explanation.
Well, can I just make a comment too?
Mm-hmm.
When we receive like memos with that information, would it be possible in the future to include what the actual cost is going to be?
Sure.
So if someone's moving from level eight to 10, exactly what their current salary is to what their future salary will be?
Sure.
So we can see all that.
We can have that ready for city council.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next is item 14, which is a presentation on the climate action plan. Hold on, Beck?
Yes. So a couple months ago, we, I had brought forth a discussion about the climate action plan, and the recommendation was to make a subcommittee that could kind of hash out and debate all 90-something strategies listed in there and make recommendations back to council on what seemed reasonable. There are handouts that I think are stuck at Solfa right now. I'll have to call you out if you want to pass those around. And then the presentation's loaded. There's a, four, four of the members of the committee are going to present those recommendations and then open it up for discussion on what we think is reasonable.
How to get this up here. Where are you going to do it?
So it's the cap presentation there on the bottom.
All right. You should do it through share screen so that the people online can see it as well. Do you know how to do share screen? Yeah. Share screen.
We don't have enough.
And then is it a PowerPoint?
Yes.
There you go. That should bring it up.
Oh.
There you go. Perfect. Oh.
I'm just.
This doesn't have my notes up here.
No problem.
Oh, yeah. Well, we'll share it with everybody because it shares that screen.
Uh, will it pop up on the thing here?
There we go.
It'll be mine. Because this is blank. This is a blank screen.
I couldn't get that screen on before. Does that screen turn on?
In the back?
I tried to turn it on, and then it was just blank.
That won't turn on?
Okay.
Hello?
Hello.
Just give me a moment when I bring up the presentation with my notes on it.
Can I make a request, Abby?
Yeah.
Next time when you guys give a presentation, don't print out stuff.
I.
Just send it on email.
Because that would be the more environmental thing to do.
Right. Exactly.
I know not everybody will see.
And I try, I try as much as possible for us to not have to have things printed out.
Recommendations.
Right. I mean, and every chance we get is a better step.
I think I moved this forward. Sorry about that.
Because there were so many, I wanted, and this wasn't going to read on a slide.
Right.
Wanted you to see the, the summary of the surveys that are kind of there in the dark green bars. And then also, because we were going to go through a number of things, there's just kind of a review of the top strategies on that one single page there.
Sure.
All right. Hello, everybody. Thank you again for letting us present this. This was actually a great exercise. I got to participate in with everybody around. So tonight, our goal for tonight is to kind of determine strategic, a set of strategic strategies that we can integrate into the strategic plan. The items we recommend have resources and recommendations with details behind them that we can work with you and staff on, learn about the opportunities. And there are pathways for each of these. We don't have to go into details tonight unless there are questions, but we want to get your feedback on the focus areas. So our outline for tonight and the items that we'd like to review our accomplishments to date, review the survey results, discuss the top priorities, suggested topics for more education, and then a Q and A session. I'm just going to close that down really quick. All right. So some of our accomplishments to date, we've adopted the Greenest Region Compact. We signed the Climate Action Plan. We're in the process of retrofitting our buildings and facilities and streetlights for maximum efficiency. We've created an active transportation plan to encourage walking and biking and transit. And I just want to make a note on this. This was one of the items within the survey, and it was one that was, it got the top votes by everybody. But because we have the active transportation plan, we're not putting any of the recommendations, we won't be presenting any of those because those will already be part of the active transportation plan. We are engaging the community about services that support health and wellness. And we've started conversations about new green initiatives, like the single-use bag initiative that we'll be voting on at ordinance come December. So we've already made a lot of progress, and we want to definitely, you know, applaud ourselves for that. So to the summary results survey, like to thank everybody that participated and took the time to fill out what the top priorities were for you. For that, we had five staff members, five non-committee council members, and then the committee results from the four council members that are on the committee, three BEC members, and then one community member. So we got a really good mixture of people that participated in putting this together. So now I'm going to turn it over to Alex.
Hello. So just to recap what mitigation strategies are, if you remember from reviewing the plan previously, these are strategies or things that we can do to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the hopes of avoiding the worst impacts as a result of climate change. So on the screen, we have identified five kind of overarching strategies. So we'll discuss these kind of in detail on each slide. But I did also want to note that there's a lot of strategies that kind of overlap. So we've kind of grouped them under these topics. So just keep that in mind. I think if you look on that larger strategy list, these may not be exactly word for word, but kind of just group strategies that we've identified that are very similar. So the first one is to demonstrate sustainability in municipal operations, purchasing, and through public events. We see a major leverage point for improving operations in our request for proposal process. We need to make sure the scope of work that we're putting out to contractors and engineers needs to shift to reflect a commitment to greenhouse gas mitigation. For example, this could be requesting that roadway design engineers show experience in pedestrian and bike design. When we're resurfacing parking lots, requiring cool pavement or warm mixed asphalt. And these are things that will probably also require us to become more informed on what environmentally sound method of doing business is, so we know what questions to ask of our contractors and engineers, and how we want to define or redefine expertise in this area. We also see reviewing our internal practices and policies. So perhaps self-auditing what we're doing now, what we can improve on, you know, looking at our, how many engines are we idling, also considering electrifying our city vehicles, what does that schedule look like, can we require hybrid electric vehicles as, as vehicles are aging out and replacing with more efficient vehicles and electric vehicles? The second strategy that was identified is electrifying the city. So we know that there have been some laws that have been enacted that are kind of really pushing for eliminating, I'm suddenly blinking, on fossil fuel, fossil fuel resources. So, you know, it's important for us to be thinking about this now before it comes time that we have to do it. If we can get ahead of it, that's going to benefit our residents. And also, we all know that we're currently purchasing more power than we are using. So if we can, the more we can electrify the city, the more electricity we can use, and the easier we'll have, the easier time we'll have when we start adopting solar as well. To do this, we suggest creating rebates for. To do this, we suggest creating rebates for retrofitting homes with electric heating and cooking appliances, and also increasing the rebate for electrical, electric vehicle charging stations. We also recommend enacting a robust building energy conservation code, performance standards and requiring that all new buildings and homes are all electric. In past asks that we've requested to developers, a lot of times the response is, we're only going to do what is required of us in the code. So if there are things that we want to make sure that we are including that needs to be in our codes, we need to really focus on what our ordinances say and what we want them to say. A note too is that the Chicago Energy Transformation Code is kind of recent, so that's kind of an example that we can review and discuss to see what might work for us and what we might want to try doing. And finally, at least on this point, we've also kind of talked about, you know, recognizing that each household has different financial capabilities. So if a builder does not want to follow our ordinances or our guidelines, we could offer a fee in lieu and then use those dollars to fund the rebate program for income qualifying homes to retrofit. The third strategy is waste management and reduction. We see this largely focusing on education of residents and also city staff. And, you know, I don't want to spend too much time talking about what those education programs could look like, but we really just want to focus on reducing contamination rate and recycling, that's kind of a big issue. And then also, food waste is another big issue as well, so looking to get residents to adopt more of that. We, as Jennifer mentioned, are currently working on the Single Use Bag Fee, so that's hopefully going to play into reducing our waste and just kind of other ideas, Household Item Disposal Day. And then November, I believe it's 9th, November 9th, we have our Waste Hauler contract negotiation. So I know the BEC is going to be involved with that and has had some ideas to bring up. So, you know, we're looking at how can we negotiate a contract that is going to encourage proper recycling and proper waste disposal? You know, perhaps we charge for recycling so that people aren't loading up in their recycling what they shouldn't be because they don't have to use a sticker to get rid of it. So those are kind of things that are kind of up in the air. You know, we're talking about using different size containers, also doing a year-long compost food scrap collection. So I don't know if anybody has thoughts on that, but, you know, pass them on to Laura or the BEC if there are thoughts that you have coming into that contract negotiation. The fourth strategy is water management and conservation. Again, this largely is going to be education focused, but also looking at some of the regulations that we do have on the books. So I know during the summer, we have the alternating watering days, and are we enforcing that? How effective is that regulation? Looking at our, what water conservation we have built into our codes. Looking at, you know, how are we designing our stormwater detention facilities? And are they efficient at kind of slowing the flow a little bit, trying to keep water more onsite where it makes sense? I know we just had a discussion earlier about flooding, which we don't want. We also don't want to push water really quickly into our waterways, and that causes erosion and downstream issues as well. So lots of things to talk about and think about and consider. And then the final mitigation strategy that we've identified to start with is sustaining ecosystems to sequester carbon. Really, this is advocating for growing and maintaining our public landscapes, and I would also add into that private landscapes to optimize ecosystem services and support diversity. That is a, that starred, that's a big topic for the future. There's a lot of different programs and education that can be done. So I know I'm kind of thinking about, in conjunction with the BEC, doing a lot of education series about different topics related to that. Also, again, you know, trees, we just started the Batavia Big Tree Program. I don't know how many of you did hear about that rollout, and that's something that the BEC will talk about later when we come in to do an update. But we want to encourage property owners to take care of their trees, to plant trees, expanding the Parkway Tree Program to subsidize income-eligible households, encourage tree, citizen tree stewardship. So, you know, potentially reevaluating what arborist we have on staff and reinvigorating our tree commission as well, and getting them to do a lot more outreach with the community and with the city. So I know that was a lot. Are there any questions or comments right now? Otherwise, I will turn it over to Susan.
I guess I'll just make one quick comment.
Yeah.
You know, there's a ton there to look at. I think a lot of this, I know we want to try to do as much as we can and be as good a steward as we can getting into the things we've listed. I think some of it has to be on a realistic timetable where, you know, it's not going to happen overnight, and I think everybody needs to know that. It's not like tomorrow, we're going to tell people you can't go out and buy a replacement natural gas water heater, you have to put electric in. But 10, 20 years from now, that may be one of the things that is written into the code that you might not be able to do that anymore. And that's something I think we have to plan for and be ready to, you know, figure out how we're going to implement that, what kind of staging we're going to do to it, how we're going to do that, so that way it becomes something that becomes reality and is not a complete shock to the general public or to any of the builders or anything else, so that way we can achieve some of the things that we've signed on to try to do.
And just to remind everyone, the items that are being recommended are to be added into our strategic plan, which lay out those big vision items, and then monthly or quarterly we get an update on progress made. So it is putting these things into the future visionary document that we're just working slowly towards. So it's not anything being rushed or thrown at anyone.
Right. And I think a lot of it too, I mean, some of the stuff we've gone through and, you know, noted in here, I think some of it gets addressed in the code, you know, as we update codes. Some of it's going to be policies that the city council sets, and some of it's going to be driven by where the market is and, you know, what reality is in the world. So we just have to be ready to do the things that we can do from where we sit and then, you know, get the public to buy into it, that that's what they have to do as well, especially with all the education parts. But I mean, that's something we really have to set whatever policy we want and then get that information out to the public and get them all to, you know, believe in it and buy into it.
Yeah. Nothing in here is a fully formed thought. Everything in here is a vision to work towards, just like our strategic plan is. Because if it's not in front of us, then as those market forces change and as things change, we're not talking about it.
Right. And it is something that we have to bring up on a regular basis. We know that about our strategic plan and the fact that if we don't talk about it every, you know, couple of months, every six months, we really don't get anything done. So it is very important that, you know, us as current council members and future council members have to be aware of what is in the plans so that they keep working towards the goals.
Yep. And that's exactly why we're, as Abby said, recommending that these go into the strategic plan. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Your honor?
There's still a lot more strategy.
Plenty more.
Sure. I just want to comment on what was just said. Number one, I'm very pleased by your presentation. I mean, you bring up a number of very good points that I think the city council should have very good discussions and make some policies about going forward. There's an element of confusion that, as the mayor, I'm getting thrown in my face here with some regularity. And I do try to make an outreach to the senior citizen population because we've got a pretty good sized one in Batavia. And the senior citizens are pointing out to me that one of the things that's happened in Batavia in the last 10 years is there's been an explosion of the dog population. We probably have more dogs than we've ever, ever had in town. Many people have them, and they're, they're, I had two of them now ask me, what do they mean by the single bag program? Because most of them say that they've got to have a bag with them anytime they take the dog out for the obvious reason that they've got to clean up after the dog. And so does that bag only, can they carry two bags, one to put groceries in and one to put the dog's situation in? I mean, it's a bit confusing to them, and I just share that with you as something that is kind of a public relations issue out there that maybe you need to draw some further definitions to, I guess I would.
Well, I think that will be clarified in the ordinance that's developed, and I believe that's a December discussion.
It'll probably come to the next committee of the whole meeting, but it'll be at the city council meeting in December.
Okay.
I think it's a fairly, one that's in the face of a lot of people, and specifically the seniors, because they're out walking the dog and the dog does stuff, and they have, they're pretty faithful about carrying a little bag with them.
Yep.
Does this mean they can only carry one bag, or how do we define all that? So that's what I'm just bringing up.
To me, that's where education comes in because it really shouldn't be a single use bag that you get from Target or Jewel or anywhere else that you're using to clean up after the dog. It should be something that's biodegradable, that'll disappear when that goes into the landfill. That's one of the things that I think, you know, with education, I think then that changes because then they're not worried about making sure that they bring home an extra bag from Jewel or Target when they, you know, have to clean up after their dog.
Yeah. So a good, good question, good for education later on, good to know.
It's just one that's out there on the streets of Batavia right now, so I thought I'd throw it at you.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to derail this conversation, but I, I mean, I have answers that's probably better for another, another time. That's all right.
Okay.
Thanks, Alex.
I will keep going. So as, as has been stated before, the recommendations tonight are grouped into the two categories of mitigation and adaptation. Alex just presented the recommendations for mitigation, measures that the city of Batavia can take that will reduce or eliminate greenhouse gas emissions. And I will now present the recommendations for adaptive measures, measures that the city can take to lessen or cope with the negative consequences of climate change. And as Alex had said earlier about the interaction between the mitigation provisions, there is also quite a bit of overlap you'll see with the adaptation measures and the mitigation measures. So again, here we have five adaptation recommendations that we will discuss each separately. The first is to, again, engage and educate the community. It is absolutely critical that Batavia residents and businesses understand that climate change is starting to happen now, and that it will be necessary for all of us to prepare for and manage the potential risks created by climate change. And those risks include water shortages, drought, flooding, fires, excessive heat, extreme cold. We need everyone to buy in to these measures. And to this end, the committee recommends that the city start informing the community about changing weather hazards and risks and how residents and businesses can prepare to cope with them. Suggested ways for doing this include featuring this topic in city newsletters and having a tent at the farmer's market. Families need to prepare emergency response plans. This can be done in cooperation with Batavia schools and library. For example, a passport program for kids to get their passports stamped when they learn about responses their families can incorporate into an emergency plan. And there are many other opportunities and avenues by which this education objective can be achieved. The second recommendation is to incorporate equity and inclusion in the city's climate risk solutions. In order to do this, we must first identify the most vulnerable areas. Where are the greatest flooding risks? Do we have heat islands that need to be addressed? Are there areas where drought and fire could be a problem? How will we continue to provide safe drinking water for all residents? How will we maintain good air quality for all residents? We also must identify the most vulnerable in the city's population. Which populations don't have easy, for example, walkable access to parks and open spaces? Which populations are least likely to have air conditioning? Which populations are farthest from essential services such as grocery stores, drugstores, doctors, and hospitals? Do these risks affect low-income residents disproportionately? And do these risks affect seniors disproportionately? The third recommendation is to enhance the city's preparedness through collaboration and building capacity. Examples include engage with the Emergency Services Disaster Agency to mitigate such hazards as flooding and tornadoes. Coordinate with Kane County and neighboring communities to establish heat and cooling centers. And collaborate regionally to make sure that water supplies and stormwater are managed sustainably. The fourth recommendation is to commit to keeping the city's codes up to date. This can be done by enacting a policy to update the city's codes in accordance with national standards within a year of the release of those standards. It also means making sure that our codes include climate change mitigation and risk management measures, such as adopting a water conservation plan and requiring the use of native plantings and conservation-minded landscaping techniques. And the final recommendation is to adapt city operations and investments in measures and practices that mitigate climate change and incorporate adaptations to its risks. This requires the city to manage our land differently. It also requires the city to modify its capital improvement plans to include green infrastructure and green maintenance practices. It is the committee's intention that most of these recommendations are not adding more work for the city's staff, but we are asking that both the city council and the city staff approach the work they do differently. Some of the recommendations may require an initial investment by the city and staff to retool and rethink their work. But in the long run, we believe that not only will the city and its residents be benefited by this approach, but it will be cheaper, especially as state and federal mandates are implemented to address worsening conditions created by the climate change. I'm going to now turn it over to Mark to bring our presentation to a close.
Okay, so when you see me up here, you're probably like, okay, that's the least likely person that would be up here talking about this. This is an example of moving the needle. So I, I am in favor of a lot of the stuff that we talk about. So, I, I am in favor of a lot of the stuff that we talk about. I will be honest that everything that you look at in those, in these policies that come out is a stretch. We just want to start moving the needle. So, Alan, you mentioned education. Well, that's what the next part that we're kind of talking about is education is needed, and education is needed amongst us. There's one person on council that this is a full-time job. Abby does this as a full-time job, the rest of us don't. And so we need to learn some more. So there's several things that we should start getting education on, and hopefully we can bring in some folks to present to us to talk more about these topics. Pace financing, I think pace, I'm thinking public transportation, but no, it's property assessed, clean energy. So, what's that financing, what's available to us and homeowners to be able to, to take advantage of, to help them? Electrification of homes and businesses, that's a big thing. We talked about that already. Starting to move people off of natural gas for heating and, and water. Well, how do you go about that? What are some programs that we can do? What are things that we can do? We talked about offsetting funding for developers that, kind of like we do for parking lots. Hey, if you don't want to put in a full parking lot based on code, then you give us some money, and then we can use that money for our own parking situations. Or if you don't want to have full electric homes, here's some money that we can provide to those that can use that and start electrifying their homes. Growing and maintaining our public landscapes to optimize ecosystem services and support biodiversity. We've talked a lot about, hey, do you have a detention pond, or do we do natural detention ponds? And, and I know that there's an upfront cost, and there's initial maintenance costs that are probably higher than just having a detention pond, but over time, as nature takes over and starts to go back to where it wants to be, maybe in five to 10 years, those prices, those costs are less. And start talking to some of the communities that have done that. Montgomery is a good example. The Tree Care Big Tree Program, that's something that I don't know a lot about, and most of us, when we talked about this, we're like, we've never heard of this. So let's get some more education to us so that we can make good decisions on what we want to do moving forward. So at the very least, we need to maintain the, the folks that have been on this cap committee to keep these strategies top of mind. We can meet every couple of months to start talking about, okay, what's next? We need to create some benchmarks across the city departments for emissions, waste, recycling, inventory, sustainable actions, et cetera, so that people have a target to move towards. We just say, yep, we're going to do better. If you don't measure it, you cannot improve it. I think we all know that in our jobs. You can't improve it if you don't measure it. We need to start measuring. These things, things that we agree upon, we need to get them in the strategic plan. Laura and staff have done a great job, every quarter coming back to us, telling us, hey, here's the progress we're making on these things that we've already set out a few years ago. Most people on this council weren't part of that strategic plan. We're going to get another one early next year. We're going to meet, I believe, after we get our next survey. And now we can start putting those things in there and make that a target that staff is working towards. And, and we, as a council, every decision we're making is based on what we have in strategic plans. And lastly, is hiring a sustainability coordinator or consultant to help us start moving that needle forward. We haven't started talking budget, that's, I don't know if that's in the budget, I don't think so, but it's something to start thinking about. How do we, again, move the needle forward? We can't just sit here and hope that things are going to change. We have to be part of that change. So, I believe that's the last slide. So, I will stop sharing and sit down, and we can ask more questions if you'd like.
Yeah, and I think the points you bring up are really good, Mark, that, you know, one of the things that we have to do is, once we identify some of the goals and some of the things we'd like to do, especially within the city organization, is we can't go through and say, okay, yeah, we got two new hybrid vehicles. What, how did that impact, not just the budget, but how did that impact our fuel usage? How did that impact the amount of time the cars are running? You know, we can, I'm sure we can figure that out, and I think that that's something that we, one, we have to have for a baseline so we can figure out if we add, you know, one vehicle every year, or two vehicles every year, or 10 vehicles every year, what kind of change does that make for the city? You know, I mean, we were very early on, you know, when I got here, we were looking at hybrids, and then that kind of stopped, and now we're talking about it again. I mean, we've talked about it with both the chiefs for, you know, command vehicles or other vehicles that we don't have to have for pursuit or anything else, that they can be, you know, hybrid vehicles, or even in some cases, you know, full electric. And, you know, to be able to do that, and then to look at our other departments and, you know, do we really need a meter reader to have a gas vehicle? I don't know if we do. And, you know, if the ability of us to change that from fossil fuel burning truck to, you know, a car that is electric that gets plugged in every night when we have low electric use in town, that's a good thing, and, you know, that's a quantifiable change that we can watch. But a lot of this other stuff is going to be really, I think, difficult for us to measure, and it's, we're going to be about the total ideal that we try to put forward in the policies we pick that are going to make the difference. So, you know, we're going to have to get that stuff figured out, get it down on paper, get it approved, and then follow up on it, constantly follow up on it so it gets done.
So, go ahead.
And like I said, from when we started looking at our strategic plan, this is definitely the place to insert this, to get some actionable items on there. And I remember sitting in, in the fire station doing this, the strategic plan. It's an extra meeting, everybody be prepared for that. It's an extra meeting, or two, three. Three, thanks Laura. It takes time, it takes effort to, to put these together, and it takes thought, and it takes all of us, is we all have to be committed to it. And, and again, it's, it's moving the needle forward. Like I said, I'll be honest, I mean, I look at the, the stuff that is in the, these, whether it be the, the areas, Chicago Land Area, or global plans and everything, some of them, you know, they're, they're hard to imagine, but you don't, you don't get to your dreams and your goals if you don't start. So we just need to start.
So, we're curious, I mean, I, I would move, we put all 10 of these into the strategic plan. If there are things that are, that are starred in your notes on the summary sheet, is there anything from the council's perspective that is like a yes, we definitely want to move towards this piece? And I will say, for me, one of the things that stands out is just number one, and as Alex was talking about, the RFP process, and I don't know what it's looked like in other cities, but having some sort of a climate change commitment statement that almost gets baked into every RFP that goes out that says, this is a goal of our city, this is the vision of our city, and we would like your recommendations, expert company, ABC, whatever they are, to fall in line with this value statement. And so maybe it's as simple as that, and then also as we just become better familiar with the specific science and engineering that go into all of the operations to know what to look for, that that's at least something that's out there.
Something that I would recommend in the future is, because some of the things that were mentioned today, we're already doing. And, and something like you just mentioned is, is probably very easily attainable just to see what others are doing and incorporate that. Could I ask that staff participate in the process as well?
Sure. If there wasn't anything noted in the survey that we didn't already call out, that staff indicated we're already doing.
So for instance, the engine idling. We actually have an ordinance about engine idling.
Yes, I think it was also listed as, what are we not enforcing? I saw a lot of engines idling at Bat Fest of City Vehicles, so it was like...
Well, there's usually reasons. If you see an engine idling, it's, Gary follows up on that very much, but, you know, and we have seen the...
Yeah. I clamp down on the police department when we come into a meeting and there's a wild bunch running. I have no problem when somebody's writing up a report, add a scene, whatever, and they need the vehicle to run, I get that, totally understand. When it sits outside, when they're inside doing whatever they're doing inside, and they're going to go back out and get in the car and leave, it doesn't need to sit out there and idle for two hours or three hours. That's just can't happen.
So we get that data, correct? We, we can see what our cars are idling?
No.
It's just an hour meter. It doesn't have an idle time. I don't believe any of the vehicles that the city has have an idle, any way to monitor the idle time. I'd have to check, but I don't think they do.
How much is that to install that? That might be a way to measure it? And start seeing how much we're idling and see, almost kind of like the propel thing, like, can we do better? Like next week, you know, we have held like 10 hours, maybe we can do nine hours or something.
And that's why I say, I think, you know, we need to quantify. Do we use 1,000 gallons of fuel a month in the fire department? Do we use 2,000 gallons of fuel a month in the police department? And then after we implement strategy or we change the fleet, how does that change? You know, just because we decide that we're going to go to a hybrid doesn't mean that every time it goes out, it doesn't use fuel. So, I mean, we have to look at that and then try to figure a way to say, if it's X amount now, and we want to reduce it, how do we get there? And how do we make that happen? And how do we track that so we know it happens? You know, because you could still, you can still have a hybrid vehicle, and it can sit there, and it will run or, you know, maintain electric inside the vehicle until it doesn't have the battery capability to do that, then the engine runs to charge the battery backup and to provide whatever you are asking from it. So we could still use fuel with them. It's just, we have to figure out how to make sure we can quantify it and measure it.
But I think the other thing to keep in mind when we're talking about, when you're talking about gas, it's not necessarily sustainability of the gas that's being used, it's having to build that vehicle. So are there some opportunities where maybe we push the bar just a little bit with our vehicles? So instead of having it on a plan of 10 years, and I'm taking this from Mark, you know, Mark's like, can't we just push the button one additional year and maybe keep that vehicle because of the cost that goes into developing these vehicles?
So we actually, the average age of our vehicles is 14 and a half years, and we utilize a, how much they are costing us in terms of repairing the vehicle in order to keep it operational versus the depreciated value of the vehicle itself, so...
But as we're looking to move to electric vehicle, we might need to just push the bar just a little bit more to get us over that...
It is, the other thing that happens is newer vehicles are more fuel efficient, and they have the additional safety equipment that has been developed in that intervening period of time, too. So there's also those types of considerations, but I think we're kind of pointing out that there may be information from the departments who utilize the vehicles that would help to identify if the goal is reducing greenhouse gases. They may have this idea about, if you want to reduce greenhouse gases, here's one way that we think that we would really be able to move the needle on that versus, you know, in this area, we don't have much operational leeway because. But perhaps when the staff member is saying, we don't have very much operational leeway because, there might be somebody who's, you know, knowledgeable about evolving engine technologies and says, I've read this article about this different type of technology, and I think that having all of us working together, similar to what we do on the overall strategic plan, we might come out with objectives that would have the greatest impact.
I think we're getting a little bit in the weeds, and we're trying to keep it higher level, but, so, again, in terms of themes or in terms of like the big bullets, what, any...
I know we had many conversations about the city code, about, about like these new developments coming in and, and putting some of these things into our codes to have like solar or battery backup, or more fuel, more electrical efficient lighting with, there is going to be more development, larger developments in our town and larger subdivisions, or other subdivisions for some of these vacant spaces. Having our codes talk more about having the developers put those in there now, and, and I'm not, I'm not the expert, but people are, and they can figure out how to make that happen by talking to staff and the people that are coming to us.
Okay, so codes?
Codes, Jeff Albertson right now is working on implementation of the 2021 IBC into the city code, so there are a lot of improvements that are being made in that regard.
And I know we're doing a lot of the, you know, the lights, when the lights, city lights go out, we're putting more...
LED.
Efficient LED lights that last longer and better, and I've seen them popping up, and so, just FYI, everybody out there, you're going to start seeing new lights if you haven't already.
Yeah. And water conservation code updates and making sure we're at the top of those requirements. There's solar ready lists that can be out there, even though we're not pushing solar for any, anytime soon, we can at least start being solar ready so that new developments built now or in 20 years, when we can, we can say that we've laid that groundwork. All right, code updates, anything else?
So, I'll say, I mean, on your spreadsheet, you have kind of the municipal role. Personally, I think our role kind of will be more to do the, the leading and the encouraging, and we talked a lot about, tonight about educating. I can certainly get behind all of that. When we start talking about possibly charging for recycling, those are the types of things that I won't support as much as educating, leading, and encouraging.
All right, education campaign, any...
Don't forget, you're technically paying for recycling, it's just in the cost of your garbage.
Again, we'll hash out those details.
Right, but I think that that's important, because I think if we don't have the education and we don't have the buy-in from the public, no matter what we put out there policy-wise or what we do personally through, or city-wise, isn't going to make as big a difference as it will if we have the education that, you know, convinces and works with people to get things done on the whole of the city, not just from the, you know, the city employees, the city vehicles, the city buildings, the things we take care of, but everything else. I mean, if we can't get people to book, to plant more trees, to build houses that are solar, electric vehicle ready, you know, and that kind of compatibility, we're not making the, the difference we can, and the needle only just flinches a little bit to one side, it doesn't move.
Just want to put it in the code.
Yep, right, and that's, I think, where it will eventually all end up. But even if it's in the code, if we don't talk about it, if we don't encourage the public and educate the public, why it's in the code, it's not going to happen. I mean, if you went out and asked the general public, do they know that they have to get a permit to put a water heater in, I doubt, you know, half your neighbors would know that.
Well, that's a good segue. So the other one that I would vouch for a lot is having some electrification, you know, electrification goal baked into our strategic plan to get more people, more people using electricity, which is again, really counter to the whole discussion, but burning more, let's burn some more coal for while we got it, and, and, because it's going to be more efficient than the alternative. So, we've got a rebate program for our electric vehicles. Is there something we can create for electric water heaters and retrofits there? And then requiring it moving forward so that we're maximizing the power plant that we got while we got it, and starting to lessen our reliance on natural gas so that when that, when that flow gets cut off, too, that we're ready as a city. And again, there's no specifics baked into this in terms of like what the actual goal is for electrification of our city, but again, putting it, just like our goal was to create a more walkable city, and then we figured out all those steps of education and policy and design to get there. Can we agree that that's maybe a direction we should go in, that we should put in the strategic plan? Electrification. I see some nods.
I think it has to, again, I think it, it can't be just, you know, when you talk about electrification, I think some people think that, okay, it's going to be this cutoff, and then everything you ever replace or build is going to be electric. Yes, that may be the end goal, but to get there, I think there has to be steps to get there, and I think that's the other part, again, the education, that people have to know that.
Of course.
That reality is out there someday when, you know, Prairie State is shut down and natural gas isn't, you know, a viable source to create electricity with, you're going to see different things in its place, and that's when it will make more sense to do that.
Of course, yes.
And even that, you know, we talk about the vehicles, and we kind of got off into the weeds, there are real strides being made right now for construction vehicles and big implements to run on hydrogen and not on diesel fuel.
It's been just on the cusp for about 50, 60 years now, any time now.
Well, and it also has to be... Well, and it also has to be, when does it make financial sense for the market to change to that? Because if all of a sudden, you know, we can buy an electric fire engine, but I don't think our chief wants to know what it costs. You know, there's, I think, two of them out in the US, and both of them are, you know, seven-figure vehicles. They're huge dollars. So, you know, the reality is, that stuff is there. It's also going to be when the market can support it.
But Alan, like I mentioned before, I mean, some of that is, we can write it in, just like we wrote in for their parking code. Hey, here's the minimum, but if you don't, then just pay this money. And then that's, goes to rebate programs, that goes to people that, you know, hey, it's the right time for me to replace my furnace with an electric furnace rather than a natural gas furnace. And it, you, again, it just, you create the incentive to do it, and you create the incentive for builders to do it. There's not a lot more development, like, single-family home development that's going to happen in Batavia anyway, there's just not that much space left. But then when somebody's going to go and retrofit a building, hey, I'm gonna, you know, actually, the apartment, the chances for more apartment buildings than downtown, which has, there's multiple ways that that helps out, and multifamily, high-density housing and stuff that then helps in this initiative anyway, but then instead of saying, hey, we're going to do, you know, natural gas boilers, or we're going to do electric boilers, okay, well, here's, here's the cost to do natural gas, it's going to cost you more money because we have ordinances that say so. So that's where I think we make the quickest impact, is from an ordinance standpoint, that, hey, this is the way we do it. And it's not going to drive anybody away, because everybody's going to start doing this, and there's plenty of places that do this already, so they're going to have nowhere to go. You can't just say, oh, fine, we're going to go, you know, build in Montana, but not commuting from Montana to Chicago unless it's a fully remote job, so.
Is there appetite on the council for one of the objectives to be the, one of the first one that we have, or the third one that we have in the education one, the maintaining public landscapes and private landscapes to optimize ecosystem services and support biodiversity? And the first step would be defining what that is. So again, not asking for the how we'd get there, but should we add that as a, as a goal? I'm seeing some nods.
I think so. I mean, we've always, one, been really proud of the fact that we're, what is it, Tree City USA, and, you know, the fact that if we, anytime we put down a street, or do a new development, or change something, you know, you rip out a tree out in front of your house, you have to replant it, whatever we have to come up with to maintain that or increase, you know, that should be done.
And then also.
For my, from my perspective, I want to make sure that we deliver on the objectives that you make, so to the extent that we could articulate things that are specific.
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure I understand what this objective means, so if we could have further conversation about what would be the specific action items.
Yeah, that's why it's in the topics, first council and staff education.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking them to adopt this as an objective in the strategic plan.
It's an overall goal, yes, but I think that's where it starts, is to do the education so we find out the right size program for Batavia.
Okay.
And then, an overarching thing that I would like to call out, too, is that incorporating equity and inclusion, and I think there are some groups in town that we could probably tap into that are focused on that piece, that we could maybe get some assistance from, just to have that one top of mind, too, that we don't want anything we do to be regressive and just to further divide anyone in terms of resource, resources available. So, anything, any other comments? Any comments from anybody online? I've kind of been taking notes of the nods that I have, so I can kind of type this up in a little bit clearer format, Laura, and send it back over to you to see if our notes align with each other.
That sounds good. And then also, could staff get a copy of the presentation?
Yes.
Great.
I think this really illustrates to me, and hopefully to everybody else, that when we do some of these subcommittees and we try to get somebody to focus on this and take advantage of the Environmental Commission and the other people that we have that are involved in this, it really makes things, I think, easier to help educate all of us and to get this out in front of us again, so that way, we don't forget about it, we don't, you know, we don't let it go and make sure that something does happen with it. So I think it's really important that when these happen, that we do support them, that the, you know, that the committee's time is put to good use, and we do use what they give us so that we move forward with it.
If I could just, I know Abby, one thing that you brought to us was the EV readiness checklist. I would like to see that on there and see what we can do, you know, review that checklist and see, you know, and the goal for quarter one could be, as staff, review the checklist and highlight our top three.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that may be something we want to incorporate when we adopt the building code, you know, because we can always go through the building code and say, we want everything but this, or everything and this. And I think sometimes those and thises are the things that we're supposed to be here doing as we make policy or we adopt somebody else's written policy to be ours, that we need to make sure it fits what we, as the council, see is what we need to have moving forward.
And as, as we move forward with this and making this a priority and incorporating this, now is the time to start having the conversation for our budget next year. Start preparing of what is going to be implemented, and how do we need to adjust things in the budget to help support some of these initiatives to take us to move the needle, as Mark said.
Yeah, if we've got, you know, four quarters worth of discussions on strategic planning towards this, then we'll have a really good basis for, okay, what does the first step look like? And the investments that will be needed. Not that many of these things should cost any money, but those that do, exactly.
Okay. I thank everybody for.
Any other comments from the committee?
Enlightening us tonight.
Anything else from Susan or Alex?
I just wanted to, I guess, reiterate, or I don't know if this came across at all at any point in the presentation, but just reiterating that these initial strategies that we're recommending are initial strategies. So as we move through them over the coming years, and as we reassess where we're at with it, we're also going back to that really long strategy list and reevaluating, okay, we've got these things done, where do we want to go from here? What can, what else can we start implementing? So just kind of keeping that in mind, that these are not the only things that we eventually want to do, so. But I appreciate all of your thoughts and discussion. I'm looking forward to see where we go with it.
And I would, I would concur with what Alex just said, and, you know, one thing I had thought of, too, is, you know, as you, as you develop things in your strategic plan, you can set out timelines, for, specific timelines, you know, and we can choose A, D, and E are going to be done in the next three months, or the next year, or the next five years, or the next 10 years. And obviously, you know, things are going to be changing, developing, new techniques, new technologies are going to come forward, and that is always going to be in flux. But if you've got a timeline to achieve some of the goals, you've got someplace to reach to, someplace for that needle that Mark talked about to move to. And then if you have to back it off, you have to back it off. But I think that would be helpful, too.
And we have the resource of the Environmental Commission, which is fabulous, and even non-Environmental Commission members who are just actively and educated on this topic that are, you know, we, we've got communities out there that we can activate to help inform and to help educate and spread the word, and it's been a really encouraging process to go through this. Encouraged to see where else we are in terms of staff's evaluation of what else is already being done and staff's ideas. So just so glad that the conversation is getting started, and so glad to my fellow alderpeople that took part in the committee, and like we said, if nothing else, we're going to keep meeting so that we can kind of keep tabs on this and look forward to seeing what happens in the strategic planning process and beyond. So thank you for signing this plan, thank you for supporting this plan, and thank you for putting some action into the action plan.
Thank you. All right. Next for tonight's agenda is item 15, which is others. Do we have any others tonight? Okay. Then at this point, I think we will move on to our executive session for personnel, and we will need a motion for adjournment from regular session. There will be no action after the executive session.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Malley, second by Ure. Roll call, please.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
Serone, absent, vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Masato, absent, back?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Farren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Inagazi?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.